You know how much Ryan charged to mount my last year? You know how much Ryan charged to mount the last year I took him?
He had fifty dollars or nothing. I don't think I ever paid for it.
I wish he could for nothing. I take it that Tristan Cooley, Tristan Cooley is really good at it.
Ryan's not good at it, he just does it. See that guy, Bonchuk did. Team, he did his, you know.
That was Tristan Cooley, he worked on Bonchuk.
It's a butcher.
Oh, he was just helping because he was in there. He didn't really work. These only Cooley boys are not blessed. And I could probably be trying to do anything.
Well, we come before you tonight, well, we just want to thank you for this day that you've given us, for the many blessings that you give us, and the many blessings of the city each day. But I pray that we, during the meeting tonight, that with everything that we do and say will be pleasing to you, Lord, that we can take care of the city, take care of the city's property, the way that it's needed to be for the city and for the people. Just ask that you go with us, lead, guide, and direct us, and all we do and say tonight, that's in Jesus' name.
Welcome everyone to September twenty twenty five, regular council meeting. This time we hear comments from residents limited to three minutes on any new or old business on the agenda.
Is that mine or what, who come up with it?
Call the meeting, go order. Have a copy of the previous minutes. I hear most of my shift, three minutes.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion in second, all in favor. Got your legislature report a few minutes. Get back in, legislature report. Mayor's report. We need to set a meeting probably first week in October, first Monday. Y'all do in six through ten, one of those days, October, first Monday.
Six is a Monday.
Six is a Monday, y'all on that six. Week before the next councilman.
You going to remind us?
Yes.
Y'all do five thirty or, or you did it early.
Can you make that up?
Yeah.
The bids are out for the water projects, they're open for bid Friday. Started. And I don't think the sewer bids are out yet, they will be quick. Ballpark, y'all, you drove through the park, you've seen it redone. Softball field, the inmates got the post backing up some concrete, backing out, field today. A little bitty tee ball field, it's a lot bigger now, it's level, above the back of the ball court. We gotta get it all seeded, like rain, those seeds out, not getting rain on it. We decided we might use the little birth, seed it, and then plow it down with it. So we can get seeds on it. See, drag it once we got it, it's hard to drop already.
Also got a, got a hydrant there too.
We took fifty eight loads of sand from round park and dumped it there. And they leveled it and then put dirt on top of it, so there's, we just fifty eight loads out of park down there, and they're still like fifteen, twenty. I think we just want to spread it around, fill in holes.
Putting rock grass out.
Yeah, some kind of layer mix, so it gets started. I checked on the culverts, the tile from the bridge, everybody rodeo on up to the end of the property, so it won't be open creek no more. After they leveled that upper field, a big deep ditch there now, I'm afraid if we don't tile that, it's going to wash you out real bad. Found a place at Russellville Discount Culverts, a thirty six inch by twenty foot culvert, a thousand dollar, running fifteen of them. That's fifteen thousand dollars of culvert, eight hundred dollar delivery fee.
And the plastic?
Yeah, I think it's double wall plastic. I just want to get y'all's thoughts on it, think we need to go ahead and do that? Get that done, I mean, it's fifteen thousand hundred just for culverts, and then we have to get some more dirt or clay and dirt on top of that.
We all get it some wash away, you said, you know, we don't, we don't spend too much money down there just to let it go.
Let it wash away.
You talking about the ditch from the? Right there.
They'd be all the way around. No, no, just right there to rodeo.
Rodeo ring, and rodeo ring in that park there is down, it's two hundred eighty five feet. So we need fourteen culverts, plus five foot and a half. And instead of using park cones, we're, we're getting close to budget on parks, and we still got almost four months left, we can use public safety moment, y'all all right with that? Go ahead and do the culverts and get that covered in.
Is the culvert still running under the softball field?
It's tiled all.
Let's just make it run all the way across.
But that's the creek you're topping down.
Yeah.
Well, how is that one under the field? Was it replaced?
Nope, it's still the same one. Matter of fact, when we pulled one of the posts out, that they just put up about a year and a half ago, they went through the culvert, one of those posts, inmates did. I guess they thought they were going through the rock. They would probably do that three foot culvert, that, that post was three foot deep, through the culvert. Want to pull it down, we got patches. And today we want to put them back, they found the culvert again, but it's been, they just sat around.
So where are you talking, Greg, from the? From the street side, track to the rodeo ring in that direction?
The rodeo side, and that, the next ball court, that part of creek, all they do is rock it.
How far is it?
Two hundred eighty five feet.
Do you think that's due to, there's no place as any, place to check?
Well, the last time I checked, the place I checked was eleven hundred fifty, thirteen percent.
Do you think that three footers going to handle it?
Let's watch through the rest of the park. Actually, I think it reduces down to a thirty inch, it's not four or three foot. Somewhere down to there, reducing.
Well, I think we need to do it. I mean, there's no need in doing twenty more thousand dollars worth of dirt work to watch it just cave off.
What he, what we did up there with those two parks was the last one, twelve thousand dollars for five days worth of two machines, and he gave us thirteen hundred dollars.
You need that for a motion?
I think I just need everybody's agreement.
What are we talking about watching, the, the little fields, or the softball?
The base going across. The, no, the.
The little field.
Tee ball field that they did up the upper end, that makes nine amount, we don't get, we don't do something. When we ever get rain again, it'll cut ditches in it.
How's the culvert going to help that?
It's all going to be covered up, it'll be all dirt.
It'll go through the towel underneath.
Yeah. It'll be just like this for the rest of the way, it'll be covered up, you don't see a creek come on.
That's the cause of insulation, like I mean, that's the city.
We'll have to do that. But we'll have to get, we'll have to get some more clay or dirt all over it, cover it up.
I think it needs to be covered up itself.
I'll do too.
It'll become somewhat of a usable area that is not right now at all.
They can keep the grass mold clear over to the rodeo.
Rodeo fishing, or, because it's already got posts that's hanging out now.
I know the parents of Tee ball couldn't appreciate it, can't let kids have that ditch.
You're good with, I'll see, see about getting them up there, do it, get, oh, there's, it's not live, but when they run the electric for that, the upper end of the ball field, they put it through those culverts, so it's in water all the time. Like, electric, it's just going overhead, they run through, through that.
The one underneath softball field?
No. That end of the park up there was the thing you had lights up there, but they run the, the conduit through the culvert, it sets in water all the time. So, yeah, electricity number here.
Yeah, I feel like we ought to pull that out there.
Where you going to put lights on that field at some point, you thinking about it?
Well, we still, we still got sixteen light poles, fifteen lights setting up there in storage, we didn't use on this.
They probably work on tee balls, they, they don't work good.
That's something we can talk about. If y'all get it ready, I'll get started.
Sheriff's report, just a town. Since our meeting goes from eight eleven to yesterday at seven. Had a total of sixty eight calls for service with five total arrests. That's all I got today. Thanks, Sheriff.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So for August, we've had seven calls, of course, five of them have been fires. Couple of them even though we had, you know, burn vans out, two medicals. Still, still, September the sixteenth, we hosted a ground ladders class, we'll have it Tuesday, and then possibly Friday night if we need to finish it up. Then ICC is handling, or, having a nine eleven memorial at, on the eleventh, Thursday the eleventh. We're taking one truck there and three or four are going, just Nancy going, Danielle, and a couple more are going. Nine fifteen in the morning, if anybody wants to go. Be a memorial that Mr. Williams was putting together while the period five of lockdown. We've got a couple of tires on front of one of the tankers that's getting a little bad. I want to miss the oxygen or not a little bad, but anyway, they're, they're, they're getting bad enough that we're having some concern with it. And the school has taken some off of some buses that, that they had to take off, that are still good. And we'll take one of the trucks down next week, and tomorrow is coming after we're going to swap out two of those tires. And get, get two good tires put on one tankers. Ordered a bunch of LED lights to put on some of the trucks, those old military trucks, I mean, they, I don't think they really wanted to be seen in, when they was in the military anyway, so not much lighting to them, so we've got a bunch of LED lights. We've had so many fires, especially the, the grass fires using those big tankers, that we realized that it's not able to see very good after it's dark, so some LED lights on those. We got some LED lights for the, the side by side, we've used it quite a bit, putting it on a trailer hauling it to the fire. Got some new tires in for it, some heavy duty, uh, Nobby tires. Just do a little bit of heat on that, and get some stuff on there, we're looking, I'm looking at a skid unit to put in the back of it, right now we've got a, like a forty gallon water tank with just a river sprayer hose on it, looking at putting a skid unit in the back of it. And sure, like we put in the back of that one, three quarter ton fresh truck. That way we're going to be able to use it more and more on some of these, some of these fires, we knocked that fire down pretty quick, we can get rid of it with that buddy. It's paid off in the last couple of months, just, we knocked a lot of it down before four street got there and everything wicked too, so. Got a couple of new guys coming on, uh, we've been working great with Pindel, and it's worked out really great, we're getting now paged both at the same time. What we were waiting until, you know, they'd say if we were going to come, or if we had anybody to come, now we're just paging both of us at the same time. And if they get paged, they page us to, you know, the more people we can get there to get something done, because these fires are getting out of hand quick, you know, they, we worked in a truck fire on highway. Couple of weeks ago, and a little storm come up, lightning struck out in Jim Mitchell's, uh, field, and sparked one right there. You know, we'd like to never found it to get to it, so give something that we can get in there and do it. With some water, you know, forty gallons of water not going to go very far, but this thing's got a hundred fifty gallons of water in it plus five, so we can knock some stuff out pretty quick. Other than that, Mr. Stacey, you got anything?
Thank you. Dixon Museum Foundation, Van Buren, here, y'all have a copy of the report. Still breaking records down there. Not sitting open this year, no record. I think their next, be, going to be living windows, I think. Main Street Coppers this week, him, be going with them, there's five or six of them. Lauren Argo, Argo and her husband up here last week, they're looking at another, another grant, it's going to be pretty cool. Going to get back, paved back, walking trail. They're, they're just, they're in the early stages of it, they, they brought me a map of it, and when they get everything ready, they're going to bring it, present to y'all.
It's all over the town.
All over town. Next, unfinished business.
I didn't work the last meeting, I was at the time before, and I didn't know that last meeting was, I'm just, I may have been brought up, maybe been brought up. For the committee, but I understand, anyway, when I was at the last meeting, I explained that I was doing one hundred percent of everything I could. The city and me and everybody else take care of my problem. And since then, I've, I've worked into my, my legal rights because. Sheriff and office now was ruling for him, told me that I was not allowed on official property, and I have paperwork filed that I had filed. Say legal, it says property, it's not my property, I'm not allowed on it, I'm being trust fashioned, just the same as you are or anyone else. And I brought the paperwork showing that I was not going to do it just to tax bill. But they said it was my name, last time I was here. Well, I would work. Tax bill, hard in. Are in the name of Joseph Banks. He get, address the tax bill sent to is. Twenty nine forty seven Highway fifty six, Alacoa Carter's. I don't get the, I don't, I do not get the tax bill because, and I talked to attorneys, after attorneys, I talked to abstract office. When I signed the escrow contract for deed, I also signed a deed to the people that are buying this. I, if I get killed in the power today, it don't matter, he's saying it's his property, it will be due to the abstract company as the deed. This contract is bound legal, saying that all my rights go to him when it's paid off, just like if I own the bank, I pay the bank off, it comes to me. And I went back to the abstract company, they've got hundreds and hundreds of these out there, and they tell me I'm not allowed on the property, it's not my property. And I don't know, and I even talked to attorney that, I don't know if you're the attorney, I talked to him on the phone.
Yeah, it's with you, we, yeah, we get to talk.
And you said that I need to get advice from attorney? And I talked to one, but I also went to abstract office, and they tell me this is not my property. I am doing my best to get it back in my name, I told y'all that's the last painting, I sent you the paperwork, and I sent y'all the papers in, the abstract office, he brought a payment into the abstract office. Without my knowledge. Once they accept one payment, I had to go back through all my foreclosed processes. And I started back through them, and I told him not to accept nothing. But then, I didn't know until, up four or five days ago, when I called up here, that the city was trying to fine me so much today, for me not doing what I was told to do. I, I am doing one hundred percent of everything I can do. Uh, I don't know if your attorney, what advice he gave y'all, me, she gave me advice. My advice from that search company and attorney is, this is not my land, it's, I don't get the tax bill over it, tax bill goes to them. And they, before they said they looked the taxes up and I got the tax bill, no I don't.
When I made this abstract company, when I made that payment to the abstract company, does that money go to you?
It goes to the bank, I'll wait for it, it goes straight to them.
And while that, that contract, you do have the deed with it, that deed does not get filed and on record until they make that final payment.
States that I have a deed.
Read number six, repair that number six.
I delivered the deed, I delivered the, abstract had.
Yes, but it's not, uh, it's not.
It's not filed.
Until they, until they make their final payment, that deed is not like this.
He said, I did deliver.
Do we hear what number six says?
Said title best legal right title or interest legal erected, the premises are any part of, shall vest an environment to delivery of the deed for sale.
That means till the deed is delivered to them?
I delivered, the abstract company is a little part of, that's who we should.
Right, and they're going to hold it until they make that final payment, once that final payment's made, the deed goes.
I ain't killed today in the car wreck, I have not delivered the deed to them.
And they still have to make that final, to get that deed.
I don't know what they have to do, they have to clarify this, just like if you, if you buy a car and go to wait for it, you have to file a payment on that card, it's not sure, but you have to, you have to.
Exactly.
Okay, this is their, just like when I buy a car, it's my car, even though I own the bank, that's their house, even though they own me and the bank.
Are they current owner payments?
I had to go back look, and when they made that payment the other day, I have sent them.
When, when's the last payment you got for them?
I don't take care of my paperwork, to be honest with you, I wouldn't, I didn't know the brand yet, I, I just showed them, showing that I'm not owning. But it's, I have put another foreclosure agreement, fore, to them, since I was here last, and.
And then what's going to happen if the foreclosure goes through?
Hopefully I'll get it back, if, if the sheriff's department will go get it back for me. I mean, I had one, I had one sixteen months one time, of rent in the house, before I could set foot in my home yard. These are more simple, because it's, it's a contract. And hopefully, when the thirty days drop and I deliver that to them, they will deliver it to him and tell him to get out. That's, that's why it don't really work. But until then, I can't do nothing, and when I was, I, I would've been in hospital over and over, my son's here, he can verify, I didn't, I picked my mail up, takes it off. I didn't get that letter till about two weeks, I didn't get that letter till I found out about what was going to paper. And I said, I need all my paperwork or something, I don't know about. I've been back for a little while, back for a little while, and I don't know if I did it on first when I was up here before. I said, so I put this on, operated on four times, and the last operation was a two hour operation, eight hours, and I died twice in an operation. And that was a U M S, and I haven't done anything since then, I haven't been able to do anything, except I do, I have sent him a foreclosure, like I promised y'all I would. I've done everything I promised I'd do.
I'm going to let somebody else ask some questions, I've asked a couple of them too.
You're on the sheriff's department, can I really go on that property?
I, I don't have all the context here, and there's an attorney here that can probably answer that a lot better than I could.
She has to, it's different than other attorneys, so.
Sounds like what she said sounds right, but I'm not an attorney, but.
Well, my attorney said about, abstract, they got these, they got thousands of them. None of them thousand can go on that property until the foreclosure, you get it back in your name, it's not in my name. Actual, he's even getting the home state credit on it.
Just that you pay taxes, doesn't make your ownership of it. You're still legal record owner, the, the current, most current.
It's right here, it's going to him.
After the next.
I've already presented a deed to them, I already filed, signed the deed and gave it to them.
To that.
Yes.
Except they're holding it.
Not to Jeff. Not to just.
So we don't get a place for it, just like anything else you buy.
Exactly.
You don't get, you don't get a title of your car that's paid for, but if you run over somebody, you're
That's what she's been trying to do, the abstract office has a deed, he don't, they're holding it till you make the final payment.
When he makes, um, payment, he's
If you own a bike through your car, they own the title of your car too.
Right.
I, they tell me they sold you too, you can't go get your car. They're not allowed to go get it. I'm not allowed to go back there. Oh, I don't know how, like her would say that with other times you still make.
How your attorney call me and we'll talk.
I understand how I can be confusing, because I've, I've been in your place. I've been the person that's sold it to someone through the abstract company. But she's, she's right, they hold the title, you've given all your rights to them. As long as they make payments, they're holding your title. But it still belongs to you until they make a final payment. And once that final payment, they then take the title and file it with the county and put it in their name. That's been my experience.
If you own for a bank, that's the same way.
But you're exactly right.
You don't buy the bank, bank owns you, it's the bank's land, not yours.
You're the bank.
Yes.
And you're foreclosing.
And, and the bank, the bank's name is also on it.
It's true, but you're
The mortgage holder, so the mortgage holder
But that's a two backtrack. You're the one who
The mortgage holder is a, is part owner that way.
But you're the one who got the bank loan, so you're ultimately responsible.
On one loan, the loan before me is activated by the bank.
Yeah, but the loan that you have with the bank, that's primary, that's, that's the one, you're responsible for it. That's my understanding.
Okay, they're responsible for my loan. I don't know how to take care of this because he won't ever be walking from that land today and start cleaning stuff up. Probably told you.
I mean, based on what I've heard, I'm not gonna arrest you for that.
Do they still reside there?
I don't have all the information, but it's, what I'm understanding
I've got hundreds of these out, and I go to all hundreds of them, go in their house and start getting stuff out of them.
If, if you have seized the property back and they're not living there anymore, you're the bank.
I haven't seized it.
Like what she said, you're the bank. I'm trying to answer your question, okay? That's just my understanding, and I, I'm trying to think, I'm not an attorney, okay? But I'm trying to think if I had to present that to a prosecutor, that those people no longer live there and you're in the process of getting the property back, and it sounded like they haven't made a payment in a long time. Again, I mean, yeah, there's something
They do live there and they made a payment about three weeks ago.
And how many months?
They was, they were bound up today on the papers. They're not bad, it was the other side, I was foreclosing on some other reason.
But the only question, you told me one time they let them us behind.
They was, they come caught up, they, they caught all that up about, right after this off started, they come caught up today on papers, but now I've had, I'm foreclosing on a different reason. I'm doing my best to do it. I'm doing a little insurance, because the insurance papers didn't go through, so I pay. Now you're behind on that, and they said, "We're getting it tomorrow."
Somebody insured that place out there? Somebody insured that place out there?
Two different people did, so.
What?
Two different companies did, if you don't mind, so.
Did they come look at it?
Didn't you have to go up there early on and tell them that smokestack coming out the window?
You went out there and told the insurance company?
No, I told, I told Joe then about the smokestack coming out of the side of the window, up the side of the house, up the side of the building.
Oh, to me, see, I can't go in all the other side of, or not usually, to me. And I can't throw any stuff in there.
It's got smoke coming out of there usually.
I'm, I'm doing my best to foreclose on them. I'm, they have got insurance, back and forth, back and forth, and every time it goes out, I send them one.
And you check with Charlie tomorrow?
Okay, I think what she said, you need to get your attorney to call her, and y'all need to work it out that way.
How Charlie, if y'all are gonna arrest him, he going to on that property.
If there's, if there's people still residing there, leaving contracts on that, I just think, I think there'd be better discussion with all of y'all's attorneys.
I know I can't go over to somebody.
Well, I don't, so you know more than me. I know what I mean.
Yeah, but I know that, that it's happened before.
Okay.
I haven't seen anybody out there at all, I don't know.
Was there somebody there when we came by, trucked something out? He driving for a man.
What?
He's driving for a man, they was there when I come by, they were going. And I was gonna pull in, but it was there, and I just said, "I want to go in."
I actually got seen activity there. I did.
Moved back there.
Oh, did they?
I don't think they did. They lost access behind the gang.
Yeah, I knew that.
And they moved.
Well, I understand.
They moved back last month.
Okay.
They never did, let it go good down here.
Yeah, they moved it.
It lived for a while. It lived for a while. But what I'm trying to say, city, I can only do what I can, and I'm doing my best, so why, why in the world you won't work with me?
Let me ask you a question. What do you think we need to do to get that place cleaned up?
Let me finish foreclosing, then I will have it.
And that's gonna take how long?
I'm hoping another month or two, but it sucks, it sucks my legal rights.
It could take years, so, I mean, if they, if you foreclose and you say every time they make a payment, it starts over?
The abstract company, lots of stuff, no payment on that.
Okay, but they, they accepted one three weeks ago?
They did, well, I said three weeks ago, about the last paper. I, I didn't know it was a late paper, they didn't make a paper. If we own it, without abstract company knowing that they were responsible, except.
Well, I don't think any of us want to find you, but we have to get this taken care of, it's been going on for a long time.
Because y'all can't do nothing with Joe, he's the owner, so then you turn around to me. And I feel like y'all
Call your primary owner?
Well, tax records don't settle that.
Tax records don't matter.
You're saying me, the tax, your attorney, you're saying tax records don't matter?
Not in this situation. If he's on my current deed, it's the legal record owner that he's
I probably signed it over, signed, filed it, but I signed it with he. If you owe a lot to the bank, you owe paying it, whatever you gotta go to the bank too, but the bank's not the owner of it.
His lawyer, her lawyer, working out?
Well, they need to talk with Noel, listen. You're telling me if they just, if they never paid you another penny, they own that property? Is that what you're saying? That's what you're saying?
No, they own it until I foreclose. I'm fixing to fore, I'm foreclosing on that. It serves until I foreclose on it. Yes, it is.
Okay, and you're not accepting any more payments from them?
No.
That's what you're saying?
I'm not, and abstract company's not.
Okay.
I, I've done every, I told you, I've done everything I know how to do to get rid of this.
But you're still the owner, Noel, that's the point.
He is the owner, is the reason I came forward, because I'm now.
He's a co-owner then.
Well, he's the owner because I signed all my rights off.
So he doesn't have to pay you anything then? He's the owner.
I've got a mortgage on it, yes, just, is your, is your house paid for?
It is.
Okay, well, it was not paid for. Did you own it, or did you have to make another payment for it?
Well, me and somebody else owned it, till I paid them off.
That's right, the bank, or most of the year old, the bank
And if I stopped getting money, or if the bank will, they had come took it from me.
Yeah, but when you bought your house, it was needed to you.
That, well, I don't know if it was.
But our truth is
You had a setup like him.
Yeah, I don't know.
I wonder if that's what it's
My point is, there's still being money changed over, going to you.
Because they still owe for it, just like I pay, I pay the bank money, I owe the bank.
I don't know, I can, I can explain.
It's hard to explain.
If they own me, though, they don't have to pay you nothing else for it.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, not if they own it.
He owe for your car.
What?
He owe for your car.
Yeah.
If you quit paying payments on your car, who would owe?
Very.
The bank again. The same.
Okay, if you quit paying it on them.
If they weren't paying me, then it'd have been a paper, so you don't own your car.
Hey, Noel, this been going on for years, that place.
I didn't know that. I only knew it about two, two, three months ago, is the first time I saw.
That's two, three months still.
And I've come up here and told y'all to do my best, and I've had two different letters sent. I didn't know about the last
Well, let, let the lawyers talk and he may also see what happens.
And it, it hurts my feelings that the city council would run something in the paper against me. That's, it don't have my reputation either. I do business of several work, and when they see my name in the paper
We don't run the WAPA recurring.
Do what?
We don't run the WAPA recurring.
How do they, how do they know that?
Standing up there, is that they?
Did you just write?
Public meeting?
Because they stand
It's a public meeting, and I wasn't the one to cover this meet, the meeting, but anything that's at the public meeting is what gets put into the paper. So whatever's said at the meeting.
So if I say something wrong, it's gonna be in the paper?
If you say something here, it could be in the paper.
Could be or will be.
It's at my discretion. Whoever writes is discretion.
So it don't have to be a paper?
So you need your lawyer to get in touch with her? And by next meeting? So we, and then have proof that he
Next meeting, get in touch with her?
No.
No.
For him to have proof that he foreclosed and her talks to
I'd like to use your time, we need some time for his attorney to get in touch with her.
To be honest with you, I thought he was gonna be here tonight. I was told he was gonna be here. Was he not on the dinner? I was told, I was told he was gonna be here.
So she'll, she'll, she'll contact him, and they'll talk. And by next meeting, you want him to have proof that he foreclosed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And show us the payment schedule where there are home payments.
I probably have it situated.
You want to call upon him still?
It's at twenty-seven. Do you want to pause bond starting today?
Tell it, till the attorney's talking, till she gets back to us, yes. That's my opinion.
Till next meeting?
Yeah.
Bonds, bonds, starting today.
So your law, your attorney needs to talk to her, and we need proof of foreclosure by next
If we haven't settled this by the next meeting, we'd like for Dilger, I think, to maybe explain his point.
What about the abstract office? The talent issue, man, I can't
Hold up, I don't care if they both got themselves.
I'm sure I can make them come, but I believe they'll write you a letter, I'm sure.
Yeah, just have them write a letter and tell them, you, you told them to, you told them to stop that payment? Uh, accept the payments from them? All that, we need all that writing, since you've done all that stuff, and yeah, we go, tell, tell abstract to, to do that.
Okay, I think, but my name when we brought it again last meeting I was here, it was brought up after I left.
You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, Mr. President.
I don't want to say, I'm asking.
Well, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, the council has
If my name was re-brought up, you know, redone
The council can talk about whatever.
Are we done with me, did I?
You're welcome to stay for the entirety of meetings together.
Do y'all know what he came? I, I asked you a question.
You're asking us if we know anything, you said I don't know.
Mr. Cooper, you're welcome to stay for the entirety of the meeting.
Come out, see you.
New business. Y'all, y'all continue, or y'all new business?
Still.
We, we said Say, okay.
Yeah.
The RV park proposal, by the way, letting the low chicken beer nine out of state, so we both own that till next month. The Royal Rangers Park camping, it's, they're kinda like Boy Scouts, and they're wanting to use the park. Camp, tent camp, two nights.
Uh-huh, I'm not sure the date, so.
It rained?
Yeah.
I do not
As long as they clean it.
It's in October.
In October.
It's in October, it won't be
I understand, they got to clean it.
We don't usually have camping open night, because the park closes up at one o'clock in the morning.
We let the horse
I said, horse, yeah.
It just, you guys have to, have to say it's okay.
Yeah, that's, that's great. There's a car show down there, twenty seventh this month, so.
It rained?
Yeah, we gonna have to get the presents down there and do some more, or camera on it. All some more gravel in there, fill in some holes. Get it ready for us. Parcels, we never had down there before.
He's been there long. Banners, something banners.
He lives out here on West Church.
Let me say something to attorney before I forget it. When his attorney calls, have him to bring proof of the insurance on that house.
Okay.
Now, like that.
Well, it's not. Guaranteed. I guess somebody injured it, take it on place.
Next is ordinance number twenty-two-five dash oh-two. That's the, list beginning of ordinance for fireworks.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that last meeting. I actually did have it ready. I, I just forgot to put it on there, and, um. Did, did y'all have any thing that you, we did change it to the times, June thirteenth through July tenth, and December tenth through January fifth. And that's what the state, um, says that you can sell and discharge fireworks. Sorry, just sell fire, no, it's sell and discharge, sorry. They don't have times, they just have dates, but they don't have time limits. The time limit that's on there is what we kept, that's on the old, um, ordinance.
Let me
That's what's on the old ordinance.
So what we amended was the dates that you can discharge.
No, that's, is that with the state?
Yes.
With the state. Eleven copies in the old ordinance?
Read it by five minutes, we didn't know anything. Just go on to the menu.
Yeah, we don't actually
I read by five minutes. An ordinance admitting, ordinance number ninety-two oh-five to, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash oh-two. An ordinance submitting ordinance number ninety-two dash oh-five to revise the dates for the sell and discharge of fireworks within the C L M to Council of Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
So this only has to be read the one time, because we're making, we're putting the emergency clause in there? Instead of the three reading?
Do I have a motion to amend the ordinance? Have a motion, may I have it here second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? Go call vote.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Howard Lee?
Yes.
Kitty?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next is water and sand for large businesses. This, this came about with, uh, Mr. Beers and the gas station. We got a quote to do the road board, which he, which he's running a paper, and it was, like he said, ridiculous, with about thirty thousand because they were afraid they were going after, uh, cut it, saw through it, because it was rock. So that's why they did it so that, and we told him he could get, he was free to get bid. But in the meantime, he asked if we could get wa, uh, if we would furnish the meter and the pipe and everything to get across the street to them. He'd pay for the road, he'd still pay for the road board, we'd get it across the streets at the meter, so. We got, you know, I got in touch with, so we got, we're just waiting on him to get everything ready for it. But in the meantime, uh, you know, talk to y'all, uh, in the future, you know, any other large business comes in, that would be an incentive to get them here, and that you want to put a cap, five thousand dollar cap on what we spend.
And then what also you consider a water business?
If, if they want to come here, let's go.
That's hard, because we wouldn't
That's what we all pretty much was saying, we want the five thousand.
Does that commit a resolution for next time for you guys?
Start at five thousand, we have to, we can go, always go up, can't we?
We can amend it.
Yeah.
Start a five thousand dollar cap?
Sounds good, man.
And then what would you guys consider a large business? Like, I mean, do you want me to put something in there, like
Iron Works would be a large business.
Like something that does, like so much, like an industry?
Commercial.
Commercial business, commercial business, five thousand dollars for commercial businesses. I'll, I'll make a resolution up for, um, next meeting and then for you guys to look at.
Isn't that still a little vague, commercial business?
That's what I mean, if there's something else that you wanna put in there, you can always call me between now and then, if something comes up.
Is it gonna be like an application process or just?
It would be, uh, maybe we can put in like, uh, the council would decide, you know, what, what would be.
Yeah.
What would be considered a commercial business?
Like this RV park, this proposal, he wants to do, start out ten sites, so. That would be, would that be considered?
Be a commercial business and then, um, at the discretion of the council.
So we have, anybody have any announcements?
I did have something, um, I mean, because we're gonna work at the park, it's maybe for a different meeting, but the volleyball court, um, I have a group of left, what the volleyball court, I have a group of students who are wanting to revamp something, they just want to do something, um, and they want to redo the volleyball court. Um, so if they get a proposal together, can they, how does that work, can, can the council?
I ain't got a problem with kids wanting to do something, but now just because they revamp it, who's gonna upkeep it?
Well, that's something we need to discuss, something we need to. I want some.
You can't keep the grass.
Maybe they come with a proposal.
Okay.
And maybe a cause of.
Or even a different plan, so they just, they do need to come with council, is that correct? Just, they wanna do something different then?
We don't have to leave us there, we can move somewhere else.
Is this kids that you're working with?
The school, we in the school, yeah.
You could have a present, couldn't you?
Well, I don't know the rules on that, but.
I don't either.
I want, I'll direct them, but I want them to.
Yeah.
They need that.
I did get a call from the kitchen program. And they're gonna repaint and freshen up concession stand. I told her, let me know what they needed, we'll have supplies, we make sure they get painted and all this, whatever they need.
And then they could do the pavilion too.
Well, we talked, we talked about today, we need to talk about what color we wanna paint it, what, you want the wood painted or just the metal?
I just think a good stain would do well, what maybe is, you know.
And paint the metal, the metal, the concession stand probably.
Maybe, yeah. I've done that before, it actually, you know, the old metals that are replacing the metals, not too bad, it looks good.
So we. Do that, we talk about.
A lot down here, that red building, that, that's mine and, uh, I mean, it looked a lot, all it is, coat of paint, it really, it looked a lot better, so.
What we had on pickleball? Never mind.
It's a mess.
Never mind.
It's a mess, because the school has already gotten something together at the high school and it's more for high school than it would be for elementary, so I don't know the benefits of transportation for it being here, so, and still.
So we need, if we're gonna do, we need to do it as a city project more or less?
Well, I'm still working on a few things. I'll have a better answer next time.
I think it'd be better use of that area. Than currently what we have in there.
Agreed.
Yeah, I put a basketball over there and it gets used a lot more than a skateboard.
Yeah, either way, I wanna get that skateboard stuff out there, if you can. Back on the ditch up here, I don't wanna put grass, but will the city be able to put that pipe in or the refrigeration stuff?
Yeah. Anybody have anything else?
I do, I make a motion to adjourn.
And I did state the fact, no fact. We're gonna leave here tonight and we don't know. I thought you was gonna say, don't put that in paper. We don't want paper to know that we don't know.
Father God, we just thank you for these servants that come and seek to the business of this community. And ask that you bless each home represented here tonight. Bless this community, fathers, they seek to move forward with the many things that need to be seen after, infrastructure and parks and all of the things that, uh, the citizens need have available to use. And these members of this, this council are the ones that have to find the money and the people to do these things, so we ask you to bless them with your. Your understanding and your truth. We love you, Father, we praise you and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.